Now, I'd like to announce that the residents are deciding to speak during citizen's request. Speakers are allowed in three minutes to present their initial comments. All meetings will be recorded auditorily and visually. And Ms. Worth, I'd like to leave the people call.
Thank you, Ms. Book.
Here.
Mrs. Capew.
Here.
Mrs. Seifer.
Here.
Mr. Mchety.
Here.
Mrs. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Shoverowski.
Here.
Mr. Beeth.
Here.
Mary Nowak.
Here.
Mr. Furman.
Here.
And Mr. Russmichael.
Here.
Thank you. One more time for citizen's requests.
Everyone that wants to speak, sign in.
Okay. Harold Casillo, please stand and state your name and address.
Harold Casillo, five three nine three Spring Valley Drive. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Planning Commission. It's my understanding that the council's going to be considering term limits on the boards and the council, the commission. And I wanted to speak to that. As for the function of the Planning Commission, there has been a significant advantage to the institutional knowledge that our long-term commissioners described. Neil Duncan, he was the first member of the Planning Commission, served at least fifty years. And there was Don Evangelist, Jim Clausen, and myself. When we do something, there's our initiatives take a certain amount of time performing it. The Rock Fifty-One Quarter being one of them, we worked for years, we worked with Franklin, Baldwin, City, Hudson Hills. If there's term limits, you're not going to have that continuity going through there. So like, the other thing is then just the current, so what I'm saying is it brings continuity.
Yes.
And not only to the boards and the commissions, but also to the character of, um, that there's been continuity through the years, the atmosphere, the welcoming community that it is. And I just think that that might go away if we don't have the same, there are the same people, but continuity amongst the people that are serving on the boards and commissions.
Right, thanks guys.
Okay.
Thank you, Carol. Next, Mr. Harold Pusa, please stand and state your name and address.
My name's Hal Pusa, and I reside at four six four seven Number Devil Drive. I'm a trustee with the Whitehall Borough Historical Society. And I just want to get it into the minutes that grabbing a presentation on Thursday, the twenty-fifth of January, starting at seven P. M. Our guest speaker is going to be Tom McMillan. He's a former trustee of the Heinz History Center, and he was also former vice president for communications with the Pittsburgh Penguins. The topic of the presentation is going to be, our flag was still there, and it's going to be based upon the Star Spangled Banner. It's the fool of Fort McHenry and survived the British and basically over two hundred years undergoing restoration in the Smithsonian, things along that line. I'd also like to extend to those of you here that are not members of the Historical Society. I recommend that you join. It's only ten dollars per year. And part of that ten dollars is going to provide you with a pass from up in the library, free admission to the Heinz History Center to include the Ford Pit Museum when it opens, and also the facility out in Washington County. In the name of an escape speak for a moment. Overall, thank you overall. So for ten dollars, you get quite a deal overall. And once again, I'd like to extend invitation to members of Borough Council that have not joined to this point, and to anyone else here in the audience that would like to join as well. For a mere ten dollars, twenty dollars for a family, it's a pretty good deal. Thank you.
What time is that meeting?
That meeting will be starting at seven P. M.
Community Room, hell?
Yeah, the community room.
Okay, great.
He is a, Tom McMillan is a great historian. He's written two books on Gettysburg. And he wrote, you know, if you're interested in Flight Ninety-Three, he wrote an incredible story on Flight Ninety-Three and what happened, a lot of events, interviewed, you know, family members who lost loved ones. It's a terrific book. As a matter of fact, we're hoping to get him back in the fall to talk about that particular book. But I'm sure, you know, if he does the same kind of research that he did in those other books, you would be hard pressed not to come. It's going to be a great, great presentation.
Okay, Skip Brown, please stand and state your name and address.
Sure. Hi, Skip Brown, twelve fifty-two Warner Road. Proud citizen in Whitehall Borough for thirty-five years this month. I'll afford, but I just want to make a comment. Imagine if you were willing to do the job you do not get paid for. You would leave your family home on Thanksgiving and not get paid. You would leave your home three times on Christmas Day and not get paid. You would be awakened two, three times a week to go out on this job and not get paid. Then you'd get up in the morning for your regular job and support yourself and your family. You're required to attend four hours of training a week for this job you do not get paid. You would understand for this job you would not get paid for, you would put your risk at bodily harm, injury, or worse. After doing and understanding all this, you think it'd be reasonable to ask for us to walk the streets, to beg for funds, for a job you do not get paid for? Our friends at the Public Works Department don't have to walk the streets to ask for funds for salt. They did a really good job this week. My hat's off to them. Our friends at police do a great job. They don't have to walk the streets for a patrol car. Volunteer firefighters are not walking the streets.
Thank you for your comments.
To recap, that's been the way it's been since Whitehall was born. Whitehall Borough always wanted to let the fire company concentrate on fighting fires and not fundraising. So the only fundraiser that was, that the fire company took on was the fund drive. And so that's the way it's been since the beginning. And I don't see any reason to change, at least not involving the firemen. Maybe that interested citizens who want to, you know, help with those fire company, let them walk the streets, but not those of fighting fires.
Another factor that enters into that, Skip, obviously, is, you and I have had this conversation many times. Fundraising, we just are not getting the support from businesses, and we're not getting the support from residents. The number of, what, twenty, twenty percent?
No, I would say it's about thirty percent of the whole world.
So you got seventy percent of the people are just not doing anything. So that word needs to get out too.
Thank you.
Yeah, I respond to that.
Mr. Phil Law. Please stand and state your name and address.
Hold on, I'm going to try to chase for. I'm going to respond to something you just said to mine.
Hey, go ahead.
You were right, Mayor. Our fire company was, our companies affect newspapers, many other things, the paper itself. And they had a deal with the borough, and they said that the borough, we're stopped doing all that, you, that it won't fund drive a year. And that's how it happened. I did, I did, all the years I've been in the fire company because I've been a business. And I have said that everybody in the borough gets away with a lot. Um, Brian can say anything that he wants to say. That was all true. But that's not going to get anybody out there. And I think you know people should know. We walked the street, we sent out a brochure. And with that brochure, what you got, it was done there. We had a pretty good group. Over asking for five bucks. That was our dues as well. So what happens is... I would do grabber, hugger, kisser. So with all that happening, after we did send the first one out, we were able to do a sort of hard work. Who hasn't donated? At least any one of us would take a stack of papers, envelope, and go out and knock things off. I don't care if it's a million dollar house. So we would do that and ask them, you haven't donated, what you care to donate? And I had a guy in a million dollar house, he should have sent me a million dollar bill. I gave it back to him. So then it never worked, what you said. You can get out there all you want. I'm just going to...
Yeah, you missed my point. Well, the point was not playing fire, pardon me.
No, no.
Getting the word out that our residents are...
No, what I'm saying is that's the process. You can't, until you all understand that fund drive is done. It's a dead horse. It's something you can't do easy. And I said this at Merced and anywhere else, the board service. The only way you're going to do this is to figure out what tax rate you're going to put on it.
Well, we're definitely going to be working with the fire company. We've been trying to do this for...
If you don't work, if you, whatever percentage, like we did in Source.
No, it's definitely something that's important in our community and our relationship.
We should talk about that.
I know, I know. I know.
We don't want the words. We don't want the words to say, we're going to work on it. Well, you have to work on it.
Yes, and we want, we do. Thank you, Ms. Law. That's all I have on here. And Ms. Worth, would you like to explain to everyone why it's sort of cold?
Uh, yes. Unfortunately, we had an HVAC component that broke this afternoon. Roofroff has been here all day replacing it, but in order to do that, they had to isolate the section of the HVAC to shut it off. So the building cooled down quite a bit this afternoon. They are actually flushing the lines right now and getting that rebooted, but it's a large building. It's taking a bit of time to get it back up to a comfortable level, so we apologize.
This is bad timing, right? Would you like to introduce our speakers here for this evening?
We have two individuals from our due for period this evening with us, Amy Lewis and Vicky Walton, who are part of our auditing and have been for quite some time now. And they have a presentation for council, which I believe you all should have a copy on your desk.
Yes.
I'll turn it over to you guys.
Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome to being here. Happy to be here. Um, so I think the way our presentation, I know we were asked to come to, as a result of some questions, but we thought we would take this opportunity to accomplish some of our auditing requirements anyway, kind of do it all together. So, so that's, there's a lot of stuff in these slides that's, you know, beyond just the questions that were posed, but... So I just wanted to walk through what the audit does, what our responsibilities are, what happens during the audit, all of those kinds of things. Historically, we've always had a communication with a member of council. Never did a formal presentation like this before. That's certainly the choice of council, whether it's done via, you know, a conversation or presentation. So this is always, we've always had these conversations, just never a formal presentation like this before. So I just want to make sure that it's clear that this was done in the past. So our responsibilities for the audit is really, you know, take the financial statements that the borough is presenting, and issue an opinion as to whether we believe they are fairly stated. And you present the report that is submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Cleanliness and Economic Development, which is a particular type of form that the D. C. D. requires that all boroughs submit. And so it is a basis of accounting that the D. C. D. prescribes for how you follow. It allows you to use a modified accrual basis of accounting, which is very technical speak. But it's a little bit different than full GASB financial statements that have a lot of other things that are required under the GASB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. So if you look at the D. C. D. report and you look at the auditor's opinion that we have to issue, because of the way that it works, there's actually two paragraphs that speak to our opinion. There's one that really says that you're not issuing the report in accordance with the GASB, but you are issuing it in accordance with the D. C. D. So the opinion reads very confusing because we have to stipulate both of those. So when you look at it, it does look unusual. It makes it look like it's not a good opinion, but it really is a clean opinion. It's the type of opinion you would want to receive in any audit that you get. We conduct our audit in accordance with all U. S. generally accepted auditing standards. So, you know, we comply with all the standards that we're required to follow in order to conduct the audit and to be able to say that we can issue that opinion at the end of the day. We plan and perform the audit then to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are fairly stated. But at the end of the day, that report is still the borough's report, so ultimately you're responsible for what's contained in there. So it's your responsibility to get the books and records in order so that we can audit them and make sure the financial statements are presented the way the D. C. D. prescribed you presented. At the end of the audit, we would communicate with you via letter. If there's any significant estimates or disclosures that are built into the report that we want to call to your attention, if we had any difficulties in performing the audit, if we had any audit adjustments that needed to be posted that were material, if there were any disagreements with management that we had, or, you know, we just couldn't come to terms with, you know, how to account for something or how to resolve something. If there were any consultations that you all had with other accountants because you didn't like something we had to say, or any other communications that we felt, you know, that the standards require us to communicate back to you. We always issue a letter with those items in it. The letter will say if we do or did not have something to report to you, so you would get that as part of the final package that we're here. So page three, I guess, my copy's a little bit different than yours. The timing and scope of the audit that we're going to perform this year is very consistent with what we've done in the past. We will come out for last week of January to really do all of our testing. And then the report is due at the end of March, beginning of April, depending on how the date falls. And so we'll work to get the, everything, all of our testing procedures done in order to be able to file that report on time. There is an engagement letter that we complete with the borough to set out the scope of this. There's no other changes in scope for any of the services that we're performing. So everything we're going to do this year will be the same as what we've done in years past. We do perform separate audits on the library's financial statements because they need to have their own financial statements for their purposes for ACLA. And then the real estate tax collector, there's an audit that we perform on the tax collections that she has processed for that particular tax year. So that's a cash basis statement, just really saying the ins and outs of the tax collect, tax collected during the calendar year. We do assist with the preparation of the D. C. D. report, the schedules. And then you do take a very summarized version of that D. C. D. report, and that's what you advertise in public newsletter, notifications, newspapers to report out that the audit was completed. So there's a very summarized version of that that we prepare for you, so you can turn that out to the newspapers. The next page just talks about anticipated areas of audit emphasis. So we are required to just communicate to you things that we pay attention to as part of the audit. I'm not going to tell you all of the steps that we do because I know nobody wants to listen to that. And also to give away all of our secrets. But the main areas I've listed here that are, you know, the most significant for the borough, as with any borough really, the ones I highlighted in bold are the ones that we feel are most important. So first and foremost is internal controls. Every audit we conduct, we come in, we get an understanding of what you do to write a check, what you do to make payroll, just to understand how that flows. And then, you know, to the extent that there's anything that we identify that either helps our cause to, you know, bolster the procedures that we need to do and perform the audit, then we will rely on that. Test to make sure it's working and use that as part of our test. If there are things we identify that we say, eh, could be done a little better, we'll communicate that via the management letter that we issue as part of the end of the audit, and there would be comments in there and recommendations of ways to improve that. And, you know, why we think that those are things to be concerned about. The other bold areas are taxes and sewer fees, obviously your largest revenue source. So we would do procedures to make sure that we're covering those areas, to make sure that that revenue is fairly stated. Government grants is new, a newer area for you all. You've always gotten some, some element of grants over the years, but certainly with ARPA, Care Act, and all of that, that amount of money, as you know, has been significantly increased over the last couple of years. So we would look at that to see how that is being spent and if that's in accordance with those programs. Obviously payroll is a big expense for you, and then just your general expenses also. We would do a fair amount of testing over your expenses to see that those amounts seem reasonable. The audit approach on the next slide is really broken up into four parts. The planning is really what we are working on now, just, you know, gathering up, you know, what's new, both internally for you all, and then also just, you know, outside, what is the D. C. D. looking for? What type of requirements do they have? Are there any changes? You know, getting an understanding of what's going on with you. You obviously had a switch in your finance director last year, so that'll play a big part into our considerations for the audit this year as to, you know, what new testing we might need to do, or just new understanding of how things operate. Preliminary fieldwork is where we, you know, get preliminary items, send out confirmations, pick samples of things that we want to look at, and just kind of kick off the audit. The fieldwork is, you know, really what I was talking about for the end of January, where then we perform all the tests of all the balances, make sure that, you know, we have everything in order that we need. And then the reporting conclusion is where we help to draft those reports and work with management to make sure that ultimately they agree that the financials are correct, and then get them finalized and submitted off to the D. C. D. and publicized as necessary. Okay. I just want to make sure. Thank you. So page seven, page six is questions that we have to ask as part of every audit. So we do ask, you do not necessarily have to answer these here. If you have anything that you want to talk to us about, Vicky and I have our contact information on the last slide. You're welcome to reach out to us separately to discuss the answers to these questions. But we do need to know if you're aware of any material fraud or allegations of material fraud, if you're aware of any material non-compliance with any grants, contracts, or donor agreements. So, you know, something where the borough could be subject to some fine or loss of funding, you know, something that would have a big financial impact to you. If you're aware of any related party relationships or transactions whereby you are contracting with a council member's business, or there's, you were aware of people who are related, that, you know, could maybe be a conflict of interest. And then if there's any other areas of special concern that have been raised during the year that you would want to bring to our attention to say, you should be aware that this was something that went off in the borough. So if there's anything like that, you know, please feel free to let us know. But, you know, if we don't hear from you, we'll assume you have nothing. You don't have to, you know, respond to us. But if you have something, you're more than welcome to reach out to us to talk to us about. The final slide is just a quick snapshot, because I know some of the questions were, you know, what's the difference between the GASB and the D. C. D. report? Again, the D. C. D. is prescribed by the state. Every municipality has to prepare that report. And so there's a lot of information on your fund financial statements, which is, you know, set up by the categories of the D. C. D. prescribed, which is how you keep your books. You conform to that, so really not much to convert there. You do organize it by fund type, so general fund, special revenue fund, capital projects. And then there is some information on your debt. There's some information on your pension plan. And, you know, just some other information about your fixed asset purchases for the year. A full GASB financial statement then would be a lot of other information, which would, you know, include footnotes, include executives, include extra schedules that are required. A lot of extra numbers and information that can be useful to some uses of the financial statements, but not necessarily, you know, useful for everybody. So the GASB has made it their, their effort to increase transparency across the board for everything. When I started twenty-three years ago, we were at GASB Statement Number Thirty-four. We are at GASB Statement One Hundred and One, and...
Actually, there's a one of two.
Well, yeah. And I would say GASB Sixties, between GASB's, the Sixties and the Hundreds, that was all within the last ten years. So they have ramped up and added a lot of information. So a lot of municipalities have chosen the route of saying the D. C. D. report has the information we need that is most useful to our constituents and the people who are getting our financials, and it is an acceptable type of report, and so that's what we're going to issue rather than the full GASB statements. So that is all of my, I don't know, Vicky had some questions for council?
I do, with, um, you actually answered a lot of them. Who was actually responsible for handing over the borough finances? Is that, is that the finance director's job? Because you've mentioned you had a...
To us, to audit? Yes. Yeah, the finance director will hand, we work with her to, we provide a list of all the things that we need. So for the most part, she's our point of contact, but obviously if there's things that the police chief has to give us or, you know, somebody else has to give us, you know, she'll work with us to make sure that we get all that information and coordinate that effort, but she's our primary point of contact.
Okay. And then a lot of my friends on other councils and school boards, they mentioned that it's common for, you know, the auditing company to come in and they have one meeting kind of designed for this, where for people to ask questions. So that's pretty common, and we don't do that?
You have not, I mean, you're not required, it's your choice if you want to do that, you, the borough, you, the school district, you, the governing body of any entity. So we are required to have a communication with a member of the governing body, but we are not required to have a formal meeting. So if you choose that that's how you want to do it, we will honor that. But if you do not, if that's not your choice, then, you know, we would just issue the letters that we're required to issue to make sure that we, we at least tell you the things we're supposed to tell you.
It seems weird that we wouldn't do that. Is there any sort of crazy costs associated with you guys coming in, or no?
There's not a cost. I think it's just preference and, what's the word I'm looking for? It has a lot to do with timing too, like, because we have to have a communication at the beginning of the audit like this. We would have, if not for us being at this meeting, we would have called someone and had this communication. At the end of the audit, we issue that letter, and so the letter kind of covers everything that we would cover in the audit anyways. So a lot of places choose not to have a meeting because they have that letter that would identify any issues. And they kind of have a person on council that they designate to, like, do the required communications that we have to have.
Okay. So would the county, um, the county?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, the CPA.
Exactly, yeah. He's level aware for the entire process, so.
So can I pop in with a question, Liz, Liz?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
No worries.
So the GASB, the full audit, do you feel like there's something there that would really be awesome for us to have, that that audit shows that the D. C. D. doesn't show? Like, is there actually anything there that would give us that extra piece and solve the world problems?
So I'll give you the Amy Lewis answer that is not, we'll say is not...
The GASB answer.
Not the GASB answer, and not the Mardest Lancer. I'm going to just tell you my personal. There, like I said, those GASB statements have exploded right over the last couple of years. So you would have had GASB reports years ago. You did. A lot of boroughs did this because they were a lot more in tune to what the D. C. D. The D. C. D. report is framed off of how the GASBs used to be twenty-two and twenty-five years ago. Over the years, the requirements that have been added have made the reports four times bigger, a lot of extra disclosures. There's a lot of stuff in there that I don't, I personally don't think is very useful. It adds a lot of extra work, a lot of burden on your staff to prepare that information. It's not stuff you're normally using. Could you, yes, there's probably a data element in there that you would be like, wow, that's a really, that's a really important piece of information that I would like to have. There's no reason you couldn't get some of that stuff. There's no reason you couldn't get some of that stuff just by asking the finance director, hey, could you run me this report for this? The pension stuff has really exploded, that's what has made a lot of this, you know, really big. Is you, the the pension disclosures are now pages, some pages long. You get an actuary report that gives you a lot of information that, you know, tells you a lot of that same stuff. But now it's all thrown into your footnotes. There's some tenure data that's required on the pensions. Again, you might look at that and be like, oh, this is great to have this tenure data, but there's no reason why somebody kind of just summarized for you the last ten years. So to package it all, if the information that's there is available, it's just, this is requiring you to put it all into that report. So it's a cost benefit of, is it worth all that extra effort to make this pretty little report? Well, not little, um, or you know, I think boroughs are, you know, you're really operating on, uh, each year, what do I have? How much money are we going to get in? How much are we going to spend? Your budgets are, you know, really your, what you're worried about, you know, how are we doing budget? Are we meeting, you know, are we getting the revenue we thought we were getting, are we spending what we thought we were going to spend? If you have a way to manage that and still have to think beyond that, because you got to think strategically too. But I think as long as you're getting information that you feel you're making, you're able to make decisions on. A lot of the stuff that's in there is, it's not really going to necessarily change what you do for the budget. It's just kind of opening up all this other information so you can give every last bit of information about what is out there for the borough, but and kind of make you look more like a private company's financials where you know you have all their assets, all their debt, all listed out. I just, I think it's a lot of work.
Amy, what is the cost difference between the twenty-two coming?
I'm sorry?
What is the cost difference if we were?
So um, you would be looking at at least double to do the GAZB report versus the DCD, at least.
And what would that to, what would that total be?
So currently it's
Currently, we're just under fifteen thousand, rough numbers.
So it'd be at least thirty.
Just the amount of due to cost.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah. But then you would have to pay the actuary to get you the extra information for the pension um, and post-employment benefits stuff. The fixed asset information, you have to pay the appraiser to make sure that you have the records for the fixed assets for how you would need to report it. So there would be a little bit, it wouldn't just be our cost.
Additional, so that time you're in the world?
Yes, yes.
So we have an obligation, the taxpayers did sure that their money's handled correctly. God forbid that fraud or improprieties were happening. Is there, the diff, would gas, would you say in GAZB, would that more likely catch something like that as opposed to what we do now? Or what, is there, there's no difference?
There's a, because the auditing techniques we employ would be the same no matter if you're issuing cash basis statements, like for the, for example, your real estate tax collector, that report is super small, even, you know, smaller than your DCD report. But we still have to employ, there's still standards we have to run. Now, the other thing I will caveat though is we are not, our tests are not designed to find fraud. So it can still happen and we wouldn't find it because we're not testing for the purpose of looking for fraud. If we find it, we have to tell you, but it's possible that it was going on. So in that case, it wouldn't matter if it was GAZB or DCD, we may not find it because of how we test.
Doesn't matter, certainly, yeah, doesn't matter, in a way.
Because you have to test for fraud under the law, right?
Not test for fraud, but it
The auditing standards are the same regardless of
Of what was the accounting standard. So our testing would be the same, it would just be, we're looking at this report to say that this report is correctly stated. We're looking, or versus this type of report, is that correctly stated? So, but all the things that feed up into those numbers, um, we would test the same, but that, that would still be the same.
So under this pan, this packet that I call that says budget and actual statements are required for general fund and any major special reserve funds. Okay, so that's required under GAZB and it's not required under what we do. So we don't give you our actual bank statements or anything like that, like, so we don't give you your bank statements?
The, so, yeah, we, we see your bank statements. What's that saying is in a GAZB report, you would present a, a um statement that would show you your revenues and expenses, actual versus budget. It would be included in that report. In the DCD report, you're not required to show your budget. So you show your revenue and expenses, you just don't show it against the budget. It's not a, it's not a schedule in the DCD report. But we
Part of the packet.
I'm sorry?
It's not part of the packet.
It's not part of the packet. Yeah, exactly. I'm sorry?
Explained that long.
Any questions from council there?
Uh, I do, I do. So thank you so much for for attending. I I don't know if you've um received my voicemail, Ms. Lewis? Okay, but but now that I have your email address, we we can be in touch about some of the the particulars. But um, I was um particularly taken aback by the um, what you just said about that you you're not um, uh, showing it against the the budget, which we have put together a balanced budget uh for a good many years. And then with the um, the twenty-twenty-two budget, here we have a um, quite the shortfall of um, I I would suppose due to the the money movements around the um, the restructuring of the the loan to welcome in the um pool financing. But um, it was to the deficit of one million eight hundred thousand fifty-seven dollars and and ninety-eight cents. Now that we had um decided to to raise the millage for um us in um the calendar year of twenty-twenty-three, the the people would like to to know um, eh, exactly um what what these figures are and given the fact that you you were only communicating with one member of council and where, which was, eh, you were doing what the the customer told you to do. I I completely respect that, but here here we are, um, al- almost two million dollars in in the hole in in comparison to to what we we promised to spend. I I would expect that sort of um thing to be a part of the the management report that um you you had interest in your presentation. I'd like to perhaps see the management report of the the twenty-twenty-two to perhaps understand it because I don't think that that is um the same as this three-page cover letter that you have concerning the the differences between um using um the um requirements from the DCD versus um utilizing the requirements of the um they generally accept the accounting principles. So um, eh, with with that said, I I would be in in favor of um doing this more more transparently in in um the future, but I I did notice, I I did read your audits for for the past three years and and I did find them very thorough and in accordance with the um DCD. However, I think that it would have really helped if you were to to actually show it against the budget because I I noticed that there were line items specifically concerning the storm sewage tax that were were not a- addressed eh in their proper account number. And um, eh, that that's what me, leads me to ask about the um, eh, the auditing that you you do of our our tax revenues. Is that just specifically of our our property tax? Or is that also with our general tax services partners that are are doing the storm sewage tax and their earned income tax?
Okay, so to answer your last question, we have to look at all the tax revenues that you've got. So we would look at all of it to see what have you assessed, what have you collected? Look at the collector to see what, you know, what are they confirming that comes in? Does the collection seem to be reasonable, consistent with, you know, how the borough normally collects their taxes? So yeah, so it'd include all of that. To speak to the budget, I just want to be clear that the the schedule would just show everything. Here's the actual, here's the budget. We don't report on why there's a variance or if the variance makes sense or if the budget was correctly put together. We don't look, we don't, that's not part of our procedure. So it would just be a presentation of that schedule. There would be no assurance given that your budget was right, that it was accurate, that it was prepared for, you know, in with any um basis. We don't, we don't look at how you budget. We just, it's just strictly there to say, here's what you budgeted, here's what you, what you're showing is actual so you can make whatever um inferences you want from that. We do look at your budget to help us just to kind of identify areas that we want to, that we might have questions about. So we'll look at that to see if there's anything that um we want to inquire about to to get a little bit more information about what's going on in that particular area. But again, we would not, even even if there was a schedule, we wouldn't, all we would be saying is that that schedule is put together in the format that is required to be put together in. As far as it it ties back to your financial statements.
Eh, because I, yes.
So there wouldn't really be, if there's deficits or anything like that, that would not be on us to explain why that is.
We get, we get budget documents during budget time. Court, is there any, you know, aren't, aren't we getting that already? When we, when we, when you go through the budget process, aren't you showing us, you know, the different?
Correct, the worksheets usually show the year prior, current, you know, projected and then the anticipated sixteen years projected budget.
So, so we are getting, you're just comparing, you know, to see, like, so you're not making any comments, you're not, that's not the purpose of the audit?
That's not, no. It's more a tool for us to say, is there anything, it helps us to figure out what's going on. So if if you had a big spike in what you, what you budgeted for expense for the police, for example, that might just help us to know we're expecting to see more police on staff. And so that just helps us to to know where to look. With stormwater, you know, if you had a major, or the pool, for example, we know you're doing a pool project. So we're, we know that's in the budget, so we're going to think, okay, we'll probably see pool expenses. So we, now we know we need to ask about the pool expenses. It's just a tool to help us plan. It, we don't, we do not provide any opinion on your budget at all. So, so I think, I guess, I just want to be clear that if that schedule was presented, it would be no different than, I mean, it would be a part of the packet. But it, we're not giving any assurance on your budget.
Yeah, yes, yes, I I understand, I understand. And it 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 was just um really concerning to me that that revenues uh for the storm sewer tax who were um separated out with its own funded number when whenever we're we're talking about um our our budgets. But eh they they do not necessarily appear here, maybe they're bundled in um a row. But what what I got to say about that is that un- unfortunately, we we really cannot do that because for one thing, that um the storm sewer tax is um a part of making sure that we are paying on our storm sewer loan also known as um the the twenty seventeen bank note. And it is within the terms of that contract of that that bank note that we we provide an an accounting of that. Eh, and it is called in that eh accounting document, I mean, that um bank contract as a um sinking fund. And that we are required to to tax as per that sinking fund. And to to intermingle it, it 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 really doesn't um do the the justice of making sure that that the taxpayer knows that their storm sewer tax is actually going to the storm sewer fund for storm sewer projects and storm sewer fund uh loan payoff. So um, and tho- those are the things that are are specifics.
To to clarify, it is not stormwater tax, it is a stormwater fee that is listed as revenues in the stormwater fund. Does mean very different things.
And it's very innovative.
Clarify the verbiage here.
It's very innovative because people that are creating the most stormwater pay the highest amount of money. And we're able to do it because we're a home world community. And so it's a very good way of not putting that burden on uh
The basic taxes.
The real estate taxpayers. So um, it's a, it's a good thing and uh it is paying off the bill value, you know, helping pay off the bill of insurance.
Any concerns or red flags you see?
So um, we have always had a comment regarding uh segregation of duties because you have always structured your finance department with, you know, one person really, you know, Vince was um historically always doing a lot of roles and responsibilities. Now, the manager, you know, uh, prior to Courtney Jim, um, did help to alleviate some of that by being part of the approval process for expenses and and things like that. But we had always had a comment about the fact that, you know, basically the finance director, the way you have it structured, does a lot of the accounting. So whether or not, um, not to say that they would do anything wrong on purpose, but if they made an error, it would, it would take a little bit more time till somebody would catch that, um, was the, was our comment. So um, you know, ways to combat that is to, you get other people involved in different processes, making sure no one person takes the cash from the moment it comes in your door, all the way into the bank, all the way into the accounting records and trying to, you know, take places along the way, that somebody else has a part in that so that, um, you know, there's always some kind of check and balance. Different places do it differently, you know, you hire more people if you have, if your budget allows you to or you, you know, have duties um passed around, other borough employees that can help out in places that make sense for them to be part of that
To be responsible, because of our small staff. Um, that being said, I know when I was assistant manager, that's some of those duties were then shifted as an internal control. Obviously now with Alyssa, that's something we intend to bring back, um, but it's a byproduct of having a small staff.
So they're addressing the problem. What would your recommendation is? We're addressing it.
To the extent that we can without hiring another into the door.
Right, right, yeah, I mean, it's what, and it's all in your appetite for what you're willing to accept. So if you're, the smaller you are, the more you as a council have a, an ability to really be able to take to see things and know what you expect to see in your numbers and and whether or not you're seeing that. Whereas if you're a larger municipality or, you know, a city, there's no way you would be able to to look at something and know that everything that's supposed to be there. I mean, you you all know when you hire somebody, so you all know, you know, I expect to see more payroll for this month because we hired this new person. You know that's true. Think about at the city of Pittsburgh, how they have any idea who's employed one day or not, they don't. So that's why they have so many other people involved in the process because they need to. You all have a better sense of where that should be. So not that that sense is the same as, you know, a, an exact, you know, person doing it. It's still, it still offers comfort because you, you, you have a feeling of what you think should be.
Real picture of who they should be.
Yeah, yeah.
And it di- it didn't matter whether you're audited by GAZB or or the way you're, to come up with those comments.
Correct.
Right? So it didn't, really didn't matter. Either way, we, you came up with something where we could improve or at least something we could watch and and it didn't require GAAP for you to come up with.
Exactly, yeah.
So the, is the twenty-twenty-three audit underway now?
Kind of, I mean, we
We started asking some questions.
Does that mean we have any requests?
Done any real testing yet?
Okay, and then you were going to do DCD right now, right? So is it too late to say, you know, hey, the Home Rule Charter explicitly says use GAZB, why don't we just use GAZB? So essentially, if I make a motion tonight, to put it on the agenda for next meeting to vote on it hypothetically goes through. Do we have enough time to actually do it the way that our Home Rule Charter um explicitly says to do it?
So you would, you would still?
No, I don't, I don't believe the Home Rule Charter explicitly says. It does, for a fact, it doesn't use the word the G A S P initials.
It uses generally accepted accounting principles. It's all a case in the, in the wording. It doesn't reference F A R. It doesn't reference G A S P.
And, and you were aware that when you recommended that we, I believe it was recommended.
We had a conversation, yes, and said, as long as you felt that it met your needs, that, um, you know.
Right, we're better off.
Yeah. So to answer your question, you would still have to do the D C D audit. That report you would still have to do regardless, because you, it's a filing requirement with the state, you would still have to have that done. That would be due at the end of March regardless. Um, the full GASP statements at this juncture, um, you would not be ready for us to audit because you don't have any of that information. You would have to have your actuary prepare those reports to get the pension information. You would have to have your appraisal company get the information for your expenses, so.
And that would be for the past three years that we have and.
Yeah, we would need prior information to get start numbers. So could you, sure. When would you get it? Uh, it would all depend on when that information was ready and then we were available to come out and audit it, so.
To give you a sense, when we were doing the full GASP statements, it was sometimes taking until like August or September to get the actuary reports. So, and that was just for one year. So it would potentially be early twenty twenty-five before you would have the information for all of that.
Yes. So I mean, it's, it's doable, it's just, I just want to be clear. It will be, it would, it's not something we could just start tomorrow.
Sure. Yeah, I figured that.
Yeah.
But it is doable.
It's doable, I mean, if, if you came to us and said, this is the type of audit we wanted you to do, we could do it. I mean, we do do it for, for many clients. We don't do it for many clients, you know. So it's just a matter of, again, what is your appetite for what you want to accept? Um, you know, what information, you know, that weighing that cost benefit of, is that, is all that extra information um used? You could, I don't know, I have no idea if you would even have copies from way back then to, you know, to even see, I mean, that is, I mean, there, so much has changed since then, but it would only be really a real reflection of what it would look like, but I mean, it, it.
One of the things we could do is just to clear up any, um, any vagueness in the Home Rule Charter because the solicitor's rule that, you know, we could, we could do this. And uh we could have a Home Rule, a amended one. So that we would be like every, every, everyone else, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, you could, you, you could do that. They get very clear that you're accepting this.
Many other boroughs, when you audit, that, that you vote?
Wait, yeah, I mean, we, we have, I, I think people have, yeah. Yeah, it, I, but it's really, it's ultimately based on them using their financial statements and, and why they chose uh one option, like every borough has a different reason for choosing one. It, it's really interesting because it's preference.
What they need.
It's preference and.
Like she said, who's using that. So what, who, who you have to submit that to, what are they requiring of you as well?
So if we had a bank that required it, then we would have to do it. If a bank doesn't require it, somebody.
Which obviously your bank hasn't required it because they have an.
Excuse me, they have, they have, I have the, the contracts they have.
But they've been accepting the D C D report. When you switched, they said they would accept that.
Oh, well, it, it's implicit, but it's not by the letter of the contract. And that, that is not by the letter of the contract that of the um Home Rule Charter, which is a contract with the people.
Just as, as to agree with the bank, the bank representative sent a, sent a
Correct.
A letter or email, uh, we're going to, they would accept the uh D C D audit, finding the bank to that.
Wait, that should have been an amendment to the contract then.
It's an interpretative, it's acceptable for the bank.
Since we have solicitors for it and, and you've divided it.
Yes, it, it should be part of, of the contract whenever somebody asks for the, of the contract, that, that should be definitely material. Um.
Any other questions?
Uh, yes, yes. So it was uh explained um to me that in, in twenty nineteen that it was um proposed by an, uh, an associate from your firm that um we would leave the, the generally accepted accounting principles for the, these standards that were of course um to, to be given um to the um, to the state. And, and I, I found that, that to be in compliance because uh I, I did um check with the um, uh, the D C G A S about it. However, um, we, we are experiencing an unprecedented time here with, I, I've read um prior minutes of this Borough Council that um discussed since twenty nineteen that we, we've had um our pensions uh payments to be laid to the state. Thankfully, the um, the Commonwealth uh picks it up to make sure that none of our pensioners are um left holding the bag. However, I, it was cited as to one of the reasons why we couldn't afford a pool. And then we went ahead and we did it. It, it was in the minutes.
Well, I'm on a pension committee and that's, we, you know, they've never ever come up. Chief, chief's on the pension committee. Do you know what, do you know what Beth was talking about?
I've never heard anything about the payments previously.
No, we're on a pen, we have a pension committee that oversees this, and that's never come up. And to, you know, just throw that out there, where none of us have that information is just completely unfair.
To clarify, we've always paid our minimum obligations, um, June, September, October annual, and you'll see them on the bill list. Um, that number's getting to us by the state, we pay it in full every year.
And, and we, we meet on a pension committee on a regular, regular basis.
At least once a year.
And it's never, it's never come up.
The municipal obligation dropped.
Correct. The, the N M O for, for both plans did decrease because some assumptions hasn't had expired from the post oh eight years.
So to make statements where none of us have any information to be able to respond, I, 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 I think if, if you have information, you should give it to us ahead of time. Uh, and we do have a pension committee that works on these things, but to just throw it out there, is it the boroughs doing something wrong? I think is inappropriate.
Well, I, I'm doing this in public and I was told that we had to take this to, to the public, which I agree.
Well, you're part of a, you're part of a, you're part of a legislature, you're part, all seven members of the legislature should know about what you're saying so that they can talk about it and discuss it.
Well, that, that would not be accordance with the Sunshine Act.
Mister.
Yes, yes, it would. You're, you're part, you're not a, you're not an executive. You're alleged, part of the legislature. This is the legislature. The legislature needs to decide whether what you're saying is true or not. And they'll decide based on the information. None of these other individuals have the information that you're talking about. How can we, how can anybody respond? And you're giving the impression to people here and people, you know, watching this, that, you know, there's something wrong in White Hill Borough. It's not, well, there isn't.
Mister Mayor.
Unless you have.
Well, she brought it to our attention last meeting, whenever she was sworn in that we do not use GAAP principles. And we went to an executive session and then you guys reprimanded her saying that that's not correct executive session material. And she did exactly what you're telling her to do right now.
What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is it's unfair.
And also, also, you're in charge of the police. So please stay in your lane.
No, no, no. Well, if you would happen to look at the Borough Code, know the Borough Code, the Borough, the mayor has the right to participate in deliberations of council. And trust me, I write many letters for mayors across the state of Pennsylvania, letting them know so they could let their council know. The mayor has the right to participate in the deliberations of council.
Yes. Well, you know what? I'm gonna end this uh conversation right now because I think we talked a lot, a lot of answers. Our audience has listened and we're gonna move on. I thank you for being here.
Excuse me, can I ask a question?
Do you have a question?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Can you, if this would cost?
Your name and address, please.
Oh, Judy, over ten forty-three Duncan Lane.
Okay, thank you.
If this would require what uh is proposed, would the residents be able to vote whether we want thousands of dollars spent on checking what's been offered currently with our, I mean, who pays for this? If it costs twenty thousand dollars or something to have all this extra audit and?
The taxpayers do.
We will. So can't that be put before us as residents?
So I think that becomes a legal question as far as.
Well, I mean, the, the Borough, the Borough Council makes decisions on what they expend funds on.
They do.
Everything, every decision of council's on a public vote.
Correct.
Different than the.
If council work.
To do what I wondered if we had a chance to vote whether it should or shouldn't be done. That's why we elect you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. And we're gonna move on with our agenda now. And we have bills and payables, Mr. Wirth.
Uh, administrative services, Mrs. Hugh. In order. Planning and planning, Mr. Jeff.
That was good.
Public safety, Mr. Beattie.
In order.
Public works, Mrs. Iker. In order. Recreation, Mr. Silverask.
In order.
Library, Mrs. Thomas.
In order.
Storm sewer fund, Mrs. Iker.
In order.
Sanitary sewer fund, Mrs. Iker.
In order.
Capital projects fund, Mrs. Hugh.
In order.
Liquid fuels fund, Mrs. Iker.
In order.
And local fiscal recovery fund, Mrs. Hugh.
In order.
I would ask for a motion to approve bills on the bill list dated January seventh, twenty twenty-four from the general fund in the amount of five hundred sixty-nine thousand, three dollars and twenty-four cents from the storm sewer fund totaling two thousand six hundred eighty-one dollars and no cents from the sanitary sewer fund totaling fifty-six thousand, five hundred thirty-five dollars and three cents from the capital projects fund totaling fifty-nine thousand, four hundred sixty-six dollars and no cents from the liquid fuels fund totaling one thousand nine hundred dollars and no cents and from the local fiscal recovery fund totaling thirteen thousand, four hundred eighty-three dollars and forty-six cents.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Motion being second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And then I would also ask for a motion to approve checks and transfers to ratify uh from the general fund totaling six thousand, three hundred ten dollars and seventy-five cents from the capital projects fund totaling ninety-five thousand, eight hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty cents and from the payroll fund totaling fifty, fifty-four thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars and seventy-three cents for a grand total ratification in the amount of one hundred fifty-six thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Second. Motion's based a second on favor, say aye. Keep that. Opposed? Motion carries.
Also ask for a motion to approve pay rule for a pay date of January twelfth, twenty twenty-four in the amount of one hundred sixty-eight thousand, four hundred eighteen dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Absolutely.
Second. Motion's being second on favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And there is an overtime list attached.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wirth. Now, uh, we're approved for the minutes of the regular meeting of January second, two thousand twenty-four.
We approve the minutes, so January second, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Motion being second on favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. And Mayor Noah.
Thank you, Madam President. First item I have is a monthly report for December twenty twenty-three. EMS assists with two hundred and fifteen. Court hearings pre-trial were a hundred and eleven accidents, thirteen criminal arrests, twenty-two traffic uh stops, forty-six, traffic details, fifty-six. Written traffic citations, fifty-eight. Written warnings of traffic violations, thirty-one. Comparing it to twenty twenty-two, there's really no comparison. Some are much higher, some are much lower. Uh, monies collected and turned over to the borough during uh December twenty twenty-three amounted to three thousand, eight hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-two cents. Chief reports, a motorist intentionally drove onto Schneider Field during a snow event on January seventh, twenty twenty-four. Police identified the operator and issued a summary traffic citation for trespass by motor vehicle. Whitehall Public Works determined the turf repair cost to be five hundred dollars. Restitution will be handled by the Office of District Justice Barton. Good job, Whitehall Police Department. Chief reports, uh, Whitehall police officers received letters of recommend, recognition for police incidents that occurred in December twenty twenty-three. On December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, while on patrol, Officer Haverjack discovered an active fire inside a town home under construction in Grove Point Development. He quickly alerted the Whitehall Fire Company, who were able to extinguish the fire with minimal damage to the uh structure. Congratulations, Officer Haverjack and the Whitehall Fire Company for taking care of that. Uh, on December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, Sergeant Mayburn, Officer Meyer, and Officer Griffin uh responded to a domestic dispute involving the discharge of a firearm. His officers quickly established a perimeter, formed a contact team with neighboring police departments, and took the subject in custody without incident. A weapon was recovered from the scene and criminal charges were filed. Special thanks to Baldwin and Brentwood Police Departments uh for their assistance. Two other matters. Chief, you want to talk about uh the call he got from the resident on Baptist Road? Uh, jake, jake brakes and was that the?
That was the, that was the primary reason for his phone call. He's heard more tractor trailers traveling up and down Baptist Road using a jake brake, which awakes him in the middle of the light, in the middle of the night. And he was curious if the borough has an ordinance banning the use of jake brakes. I don't believe we do. I do remember at one point there was a sign on fifty-one, but I don't think that we have an actual ordinance prohibiting the use of the jake brakes.
He, he's not the only one that's complaining about jake brakes. There are other people that have complained about jake brakes, so.
We that is for your committee.
So, um, what, what would we need to do to look into this?
Is there a state law that says you have to use them if the grade's over a certain percentage?
I don't know about that, Mrs. Hugh, but I recall under, I believe it was Chief Dolphy, this came up in relation to Route fifty-one. And because it's a state road, the borough cannot institute or change anything because it's a state-owned roadway, which Baptist is as well.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I don't recall specifics, Hugh, on that, but um there is some element of state involvement and we can look into it.
I'd have to look into it. I don't know. I'll go ahead with the interest tomorrow.
If I may. We had that same problem. Excuse me, same problem. It's not a zero. And we just contacted the owners.
Well, we don't know who owns the vehicle at this point.
That's what I'm saying. We, we, we could get it.
Issues with commercial vehicles is gonna get him out of the dairy very easy. Baptist Road, it could be a multitude of people. Oh, yeah. Transportation companies. I, I will say, I'm not opposed to investigating the ordinance. I don't know how easy it is to enforce it because by the time the vehicle goes through and the jake brakes activated, they continue to go on. By the time they call us and get it over, then the truck's.
At the parking dock, right?
But it, it's definitely something to, to look into.
Interesting, you're in your committee.
Like I said, it's not, it's not the only, he, he's not the only person that bought this drive. All right, lastly, uh, the resident of Whitehall shared with me something that was printed in the patch regarding a Pittsburgh grocery store shut down by a health department. He was concerned because it said, uh, Whitehall P A. Let it be known, this grocery store is not in Whitehall. Uh, I have, I have, I have an understanding of, I, I believe as to where it is, and I won't implicate any other. But just know that if you read this, you saw Whitehall P A, we do not have a restaurant that was uh cited by the health department in Whitehall. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Okay, this is a listener, Mister Kermit.
Uh, thank you. I do not have a report received.
That's good. That's always good. We'll move on to our engineer, Mister Russell. I may be up for it.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a few items to review with you this evening from our January twelfth uh report. Under item four on page two on the overlooked part, just to make council aware that uh work has continued on site. Uh, the stairs uh have been removed. Uh, grading has occurred and layout is ongoing for the playground as well as the, as well as the stairs. Ham and Electric is coordinating their activities with new cane light for the temporary power service. Um, Caliber Contracting submitted a, a pay application number one. Caliber Contracting submitted a, a pay application number one for their bonding insurance and work completed today. We have reviewed that pay application, recommend payment. Recommended motion is to approve pay application one in the amount of eighty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirteen cents for the overlooked park improvements contract one. General Construction to Caliber Contracting Services Inc. for bonds and shorts.
Absolutely.
Second. Motion made a second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries.
Um, under the, uh, the pool construction, just to make counsel aware that the concrete repair near the multipurpose pool was completed. Uh, we did provide um a summary of outstanding items for project closeout to Nicholson. That was done earlier this month. We have not received any responses to that. So the pay application sixteen and as well as the change orders four and five are not returned for, were not returned by the, the report deadline, so uh no actions needed there. Under item twelve, the twenty twenty-four pavement maintenance program, we did meet with the Public Works Department, reviewed the preliminary uh street list for twenty twenty-four. Uh, we provided a preliminary cost estimate um to Eric Harris today. As, and we'll be reviewing that with the Borough staff and, and finalizing roads for recommended to be included in this year's uh program. And then finally, under item fifteen, Felix Drive, um we did have a pre-construction meeting with um Soul Light Construction on January the twelfth. Um, we have not received a schedule from them. Uh, we will be receiving it, but we anticipate a, a March uh construction start.
Okay.
That's really all I had to say this evening, if there's any questions.
I have one quick question. Over the park, what is our estimate for completion on that part?
Um, tentatively, uh, the contractors provided a, a schedule to us um with a May date. I think that's a little aggressive, so my, I'm anticipating a June. We finally got weather, so we'll just have to see how the rest of um this month as well as February, March go.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Move on to uh considerations for the volume issues. What's that? Oh, that's. Okay, manager's report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the first item in my report um is in regards to sexual harassment policy. In order to bind our twenty twenty-four public officials and employees professional liability policy, the carrier is requiring the Borough to adopt a specific policy on sexual harassment. Um, so in your packet, you do have the policy that was based off the Whitehall Police Department's existing policy. Um, it was reviewed by the solicitor, um, and I asked for adoption, but I would like to note that there was a typo on uh heading G that has been corrected in the final version, I had missed the department. But aside from that, it remains as is, so I'd ask for adoption of this.
So moved.
Second. Is this a whole poll vote?
No, it is not.
Oh, okay, so all in favor, say aye. Uh, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Next up, I just wanted to note that a job advertisement for the Public Works Labor Vacancy will run in the January twenty-fifth edition of the South Hills Record. Um, we will also coordinate posting to the Borough website, to the Borough's social media accounts on that same day. Our intent is to interview candidates in February and hire as soon as possible, given uh winter weather.
Okay.
Next up, a quick update on our internal infrastructure project that's been ongoing. Um, the chief and I recently had a, a large conference call, and it appears that the cutover to our fiber internet is going to occur in mid-February. Um, we're coordinating the phone and internet outages to allow for minimal disruption to Borough operations. Uh, next up, I would like to thank um the Whitehall Police Department for inviting administrative, Public Works, and library staff um to be included in their upcoming CPR, AED, first aid training. Attendance by staff is going to be staggered to ensure office coverage, but they've been kind enough to include us in that. We've had two individuals um attend already, and that will occur in February and March, the, the rest of the dates.
There's five more sessions.
Correct, yes. We have about two or three admin, Public Works, um, employees going to each one, and then the library's also sending individuals.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we should all be certified by March.
Okay.
Uh, next up on my report, um, we, uh, as Mr. McCown is no longer a member of council, a replacement will be, will be, will need to be named to the Police Pension Committee. And leave that for your deliberation and ask for appointment. There is a motion if you choose to do that tonight.
Okay, so we have any? Any volunteers? Any volunteers?
I'll volunteer.
Okay. We need a, that might be a motion that Bill Vee be added to the Police Pension Committee. Second. Motion made a second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vee. Excited to come.
Um, and last but not least, uh, Mrs. Bauer has reached out to the South Coast Country Club about our annual recognition day, so recognition dinner, um, and they have three dates available right now. April twenty-sixth, May seventeenth, and April twenty-fourth. Uh, if the council can check their calendars, let us know what your preference is, um, because they do fill up fast. All three of those dates are February, or are Friday.
Friday. You read this date.
It is April twenty-sixth, which is the last Friday in April, May seventeenth, or May twenty-fourth.
I know the first two.
I, I would just like to call to attention that the May twenty-fourth date is gonna start you into Memorial Day weekend.
Well, that's.
May not be a great idea to.
Let's mix that based on that alone, so is there a preference between the April twenty-sixth and the May seventeenth date?
We only do it in May, I don't know.
Is there any preference, May seventeen?
Okay, we'll reach out to the country club then and secure that date. And that is all that I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions?
Uh, yes, yes, um, Swartz, um, uh, they, thank you so much for um uh announcing that, that Public Works will indeed have a um, an opening, and I, I look forward to, to working with, with Eric to, to find um a, a suitable recreation. Um, it is um with, with much sadness that I wish to, to the way uh much to, to really know that there, there are great foods to build. Um, and, and he's definitely missed by um everyone in the staff and, of course, um, the, the Borough altogether. Um, I am in, interested in um collaborating with you concerning the um the council streaming room, and I, I did contact you even before taking office. And now that here I am, uh, in office in the position as Public Works Chair, I, I think that it's appropriate at this time to have a um notice as to what the plan is. And um, I, I, I don't know why there, there continues to, to be some pushback concerning as to whether or not I would have the right to know as to um precisely the um, the IT aspects of this Borough, especially since um it really, any pay application is a, a matter for anyone on the council to um consider. And given that this is a, a forty thousand dollar project that was um single-source, no bid, we, we really do need some transparency on um, uh, what, what exactly is the plan?
Well, we've been talking about the plan for a year and a half, that Chief Aduric and Courtney are manager. If you wanna give a brief summary again, we've been doing this for a while.
I think there's a few things at play here. Um, the, the chief and I have been working for quite some time to, to get the fiber changeover. That's been quite a process with Comcast coordinating with multiple other entities. Um, and like I said, that fiber changeover's supposed to happen in mid-February. That is the first step in this. If you're referring to the, the line item regarding moving council chambers to the multipurpose room next door, um, that project has begun, Public Works did all their prep work uh earlier this month. Painters arrived here on Monday, so they are well underway in um the new council chambers, um getting that started. Once they're completed, uh carpeting will be installed, and Public Works will then assist with the move of the physical furniture in here to that room. Um, it's, it's moving along, I anticipate that happening hopefully within the next month or two. And then after that, the IT company will be brought in to evaluate the new room as far as what our streaming potential is over there. The quote that had been received was for this room, which is obviously in odd shape, so there were some additional considerations that I don't believe we will have in a large square room. But that's being driven by, first and foremost, the Police Department's security needs, and that's where the fiber is coming in. Uh, and then secondary, our IT is, is working with staff to uh procure quotes, and once we have those, council will, will see that information and we'll move forward with that.
It's probably best to look at this in, at two phases. The first phase is fiber. Fiber's coming in through the Police Department. The Police Department has additional security certifications required. So I have to go with the vendors that we use because they have all the clearances to make sure that the network's secure.
Yes, and I respect that.
I just can't let any IT professional.
Yes.
Come into the Police Department.
Yes.
The, the two, or Lacy and, and, little catty, yes, just, in his office. When they came in for the tour, um, if they noticed, they never left my side because I can't, we can't let people have, just walk around the police station and have access to the computer network because of the criminal justice information that's on there, and it's only available to the police officers. Once we bring the fiber connection in, the second phase is building up the infrastructure of this level to be able to do more. Also, Comcast is coming in, they think they've kinda picked the right bandwidth for us on the fiber, but they're not exactly sure. So we're gonna probably need at least three, possibly six months to make sure that we don't have any bottlenecks downstairs, bottlenecks up here because.
Of course, the dispatch takes all precedence.
The dispatch, but we're also, we upload on a daily basis up to twenty bodies on cameras that come through the computer infrastructure and is gonna use the fiber connection. Five of the seven police cars have in-car cameras that stream over wifi, a secure wifi connection into the Police Department. You know, I can't, I'm not trying to prevent streaming of council chambers wherever it ends up being. I just can't have the operations of the Police Department held up because of it or bottleneck, that we can't access the critical databases, get our emails out, communicate with other agencies. So I mean, if there's, if there's been any delay in this process, blame it. Because we are a very important twenty-four hour service downstairs that has very specific needs. There's a lot of different federal requirements that go into this. There's volumes of regulations, and I gotta make sure I have it right so that we don't lose access to anything and get into criminal sanctions.
Uh, of course, there, there are certain even levels of feet that, that need to be addressed to, to make sure that the, the wires never truly cross for chemistry.
That's why we have our professionals that understand the infrastructure of this building. Because I will say this, if you ever find yourself above these ceiling tiles or in these walls, they're dark scary places. It's, if you, we can't, we can't just have anybody come in here and do this. We use David Davis Communications, we use a lot of miscommunications, we use DDP technology because of that, that historical understanding of this building. They come in, we tell them where they need to be, we can give them a general idea of where the run starts, where it needs to be. They get it done within a day or two. We start fresh and bring somebody in here that has no experience, it's gonna turn into a week or two.
Uh, yeah, yeah, for, for the scope that you, you're discussing, absolutely. That, that is with, within all, all reason of ability. I'm saying is, once uh the networks are segregated and a um, uh, line i- is brought up to, to this floor, that, that's where it, it gets interesting as to who is responsible for the, the installation, maintenance, and actually running of, of those um eh, eh, internet things. Of course, with uh any data that, that is generated from that, it, it's no longer.
Who's gonna run the wiring?
Yes.
That's gonna come out of the Police Department, it's gonna be David Davis Communications.
Yeah, that, that's fine.
That's who we use, they have the understanding and the knowledge of the building.
Yeah, yes, that's fine.
Comcast is gonna surprise, is gonna provide the fiber. Who handles our IT needs is DEP Technology. This, was it last year that, it's, it's the IT company that I use.
They were kind enough to take us on, which has been really helpful in this project too because we now have, instead of two IT companies on these conference calls, we do have one individual, a dentist who's, has understanding of both sides of the firewall, what needs there are for uh the Police Department and Athens. So he has streamlined those conversations quite a bit.
If he has, uh, DEP Technology has talked with David Davis, they know what type of wiring needs to get in here and what type of hardware he's gonna install to make sure that we have, you know, it's one fiber connection that is gonna act as two separate connections to make sure that nobody can get in or out of the Police Department.
Yes, um, however, has it ever been considered to have a, a separate network altogether? Or perhaps not even get uh Comcast involved in the, the streaming of, of council meetings considering that we, we have indeed successfully done so al- already with a volunteer basis?
This was actually Comcast's idea. They came to us in October of twenty twenty-two and pitched this idea as a way to enhance the system and also cost savings, but I think right now we're operating at two or three separate accounts?
Correct, we've been also behind the scenes cleaning up the, the bills and, and kinda using housekeeping on the admin side here, where now we are consolidating everything into one single bill that will then be split out across departments appropriately.
We've had, we've identified at least twenty extra phone numbers four or five years ago that were coming out of the Police Department that were still left over when the uh Police Dispatch did active alarm monitoring for residents, what I mean, this, this building is, is a scary place. And it's, uh, we're, we're not, we're not intentionally dragging our feet. It's just, it is extremely complicated, and it's just, it's taking a while. I mean, and for example, Comcast, when they pitched this idea, it was over twenty thousand dollars for them to ride to run the fiber connection to the Borough building. They offered to do that for free. And we said, okay. They, it took two or three months for them to figure their route. They show us the route, then they tell us, well, you know, we're gonna cover the first twenty thousand, but the Borough's gonna be on the hook for ten to fifteen thousand more. And we said that wasn't part of the deal, so we asked them to bring the project map up. And we're looking at the project map, I mean, they basically went around the whole Brownsville fifty-one quarter to get back here. So we sat in front of the screen and told them like, no, there's right of ways that you can get up through the back end of these neighborhoods. They listened to us, they come out, they put people in the neighborhoods on foot for a month, followed all these right of ways, they came back about a month later and said, no, you were right. It's back to twenty thousand dollars and you don't have to pay.
Actually, I think it's less than twenty, and they're still covering that cost.
That's, that's all the time and effort that has gone in. Like I said, you know, live streaming will come if council chooses to do it. I don't think that we're quite at that phase of the project yet because the, you know, we're moving from this room over to the next. First phase is fiber, is coming in February. Then they're gonna work on the wiring out of the Police Department and the security needs to make sure that this upstairs is running correctly, that we're running correctly as, as, as a single system, and we're not being bogged down, so we can't do our daily operations.
Oh, oh, right, and um, it, it sounds like that, that we have never generated the quotes as to things of, of the AV nature such as um these goose mic, microphones not plugged in, folks. Um, uh, but uh they are, are usable and properly serviceable for um council streaming as the um school board uh does it. And, and they're more than willing to, to work with us to, to see what um sort of eh, equipment is appropriate for, for that time, but I just wanted to make sure that the, the scope of the project in, in the final phase of, okay, we, we need to pick an, an IT provider who has experience. Uh, it doesn't matter if they have experience with the highly classified networks, which, which the people that you're working with already are, are, are definitely well-qualified for. But eh, do those people have any experience with eh audiovisual live events? Um, making sure that um, uh, the audience i- is heard when appropriately, um, bridging in other audiovisual accommodations such as um remote participants in, in videography? And that, that, those are the other scopes of this project that.
I believe the manager can speak on that, she's worked with our IT person, and she's also talked to a couple other companies that specialize in live streaming.
So the previous quote that we used for budgeting purposes was received from our previous IT provider. They had done software and hardware in-house. Um, we now move to a new IT provider, um, you know, Dennis Piper. He has been in discussions with me as far as the software end, and he has given me three companies that he's recommended as far as the hardware needs. So as this project progresses, I will be reaching out to those three companies for different, for quotes from them. Um, the council can then evaluate uh and make a decision. There are some things. There are some things that will inform the project as far as retaining this footage. That's the kind of the the last piece of the puzzle. Um and that will come back to our IT professionals as far as are we, where are we streaming this? Um there's a couple of questions regarding, you know, a couple of options for that. They all have costs to them. How long are we retaining this? Where are we storing it? Those are all cost items that we're not at that point in the project yet, but as we get there, that information will come before council. Cause you ha- we'll have some decisions to make that will inform costs of the overall project. Um so I've had those initial conversations, but we're not there yet.
Thank you, Courtney.
You're welcome.
So I'm not an IT guy, so I was just wondering. Um my thought of this was just to get put, you know, one or two cameras on the ceiling and just have a wifi hotspot. So um is there any sort of reason that we can't just do it that way?
I don't, well.
You know what I mean?
Cause this is, this is not my area of specialty when it comes to live streaming. I would think that wifi is probably not gonna provide the secure enough dedicated connection to get the the professional quality for the amount of money that's being invested in the council chambers into the multipurpose room to be able, you know, and to start live streaming. I think that uh we're just gonna have to leave this up to the companies that specialize in this and they will tell us what's the best way to do it.
My idea was just, I originally thought it was just gonna be uh, you know,
Didn't turn that simple, huh?
Cheap and get the job done, you know?
Just overall, there's nothing simple in this building. We created a server room downstairs in the police department. We needed a AC unit inside of it to make sure that it stayed at a regulated temperature. The room is like a size of a clo- like a cook closet. Twelve thousand dollars later, you have the air conditioner. The same, eh eh sadly, I'm not jinxing you, sadly, the same thing may happen when we start to look at the needs of the room and to get, run the lines and the infrastructure that's needed because this is just an old building. You know, when it was designed, computers and cameras and stuff weren't even really anywhere in the picture.
Okay, thank you, Chief, and Courtney. We'll move on to our committee reports. The library, Mrs. Thomas?
Thank you. So the library had their first board meeting of the new year on Wednesday, January tenth. And they have elected their new board. The president is Mary Rose Chassler, who will be giving our report this evening. Uh vice president is Jason Holiday. Our treasurer is Sania Anakari. And the secretary is Kristy Kuhn. Looking forward to working with the group this year. Um but Mary Rose, would you like to preside?
Um the library finished up a very busy December with um holiday speed activities for all ages and then quickly moved into getting ready for tax preparation assistance, which is very popular with the citizens and they'll be mounting that um starting very soon. Children's programming has begun already and they're talking about summer programming. We'd like to announce that the children's libraries specifically that Denise Ignaski and Kristin Dano, the outreach coordinator, were selected among five libraries in the entire state to um participate in an initiative type of building equity-based summers through libraries and communities. Um they will attend some um educational sessions and then be, they'll get a five hundred dollar grant at the end of that in order to provide summer programming, um that looks at equity and um quality throughout the community. And they also have received funding to continue with the bag baits of the baby bags which are given to new mothers and pregnant mothers who come to the library. And it's a gift bag of books because literacy begins, you know, young. And um other than that, we're up and running. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, any questions for Lacey? We'll move on to our recreation. Mr. Soborowski?
I see Hannah here.
Yes. Thank you. Um the recreation board met for a first meeting on January eighth. We had a wonderful meeting. I do apologize. I probably have the longest report of tonight. We covered the upcoming events from today, uh from January first to August. Um so we'll just go through a couple of them. Due to various reasons, the soup cook-off was postponed. A recreation board member did suggest pairing the soup cook-off with our fall festival um on September twenty-eighth. Um that suggestion was unanimously agreed on, so that will be with that. Um this morning I did meet with the library. We will be partnering currently on ten events. All events will be free to residents. We will be splitting the costs as necessary um so residents can have free, more free events. Um our funny fundraiser rec uh comedy show has been sold out. We are over two hundred and fifty people this year. Um that is February seventeenth. We actually have so many people this year, we had to move the buffet as well as the dessert bar into a separate room. Which I think is okay. So um we did add in the de- additional games, so those should be fun. Um Community Weekend will be held August tenth and eleventh. I know that we might not be thinking of that, but we have to. So um I've begun reaching out to performers, vendors, and contractors um so that we can get those booked as well. Um Bingo will be held on Thursday, January twenty-fifth. The cost is ten dollars. You get dessert, twenty games of bingo, and a bottle of water. Bingo continuously sells out, so um I only have one spot for this coming thing now, so if anybody wants to come, please let me know. To continue, this uh Whitehall Borough staff as in as a whole is going to participate in the twenty twenty-four uh pool or plunge. Um if you would like to make donations, thank you, Mr. Casciato. Um he went on, you can go on our website and go right to the pool or plunge for Whitehall Borough and donate if you wish. Um there will be multiple people taking the plunge this year. That's February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Um our Kids' Seal program started in January and that will continue the first Saturday of each month until the Pittsburgh Marathon on May fourth. Um that our kids will actually participate in that one mile run and that is the end of their marathon that they run overtime. Um so we have a lot of participants. We go through the school district because they don't have a team, so a lot of those kiddos are coming to us because there's no running activities for younger kids. Um we are actually starting to get like four-year-olds and five-year-olds and they're doing really well too, so that's always fun. Our seasonal giving, as you know, did come to an end. We were able to donate over seven truckloads of clothes to Community Clothing Exchange. They are having a donation giveaway day on January twenty-seventh at the Zion Lutheran Church um on fifty-one. And um is that Brownsville or is that that? Brownsville. Um so I will be volunteering for at that in the morning. And then after that, um we are doing a winter golf scramble with Miller's Mulligans, which is a golf simulator. So it's nine holes, four people per team. It's only a hundred dollars for the entire team. There's also some activities that we added. We currently only have one spot left for that, so if that's something that you would like to do, we are doing that. So Saturday will be busy. Um then we um our Easter egg hunt's going to be coming up. That is a free event that I sell out very quickly. Um that free event is basically hosted by um the comedy show and things like that that we do. Um so those sales will be going on February first, which will be before our next meeting. On February tenth, we will be hosting a CPR for children, infant, and adults. Um there's two sessions, a sh- session in the morning and a session in the afternoon. It's fifty-five dollars for recertifications, eighty dollars for certifications. And that can be s- um signed up online and that'll be in the community room, two different sessions. I'm almost done, I promise. Um all of our pool parties are booked um out for the season, so we have no more left. Um that takes us from June all the way to August. Um lastly, we're hosting a lifeguard certification class like we did last year. Um that's gonna be January twenty-seventh and February fourth. That allows us to certify, have lifeguards get certified if they would like to be a lifeguard at the pool. We are accepting all seasonal positions currently and we are getting so many um applications right now. So um we're looking really good for the summer. My folders are overselling right now. We're taking all applications until March eighth. Any questions concerned?
I don't know where you find the energy. I'm tired of this one, too.
I have a question about the CPR class.
Yes.
You are certifying only adults or you're also allowing children to register for that class?
Children can register. Um so it's being um hosted by Recreation, a um real estate agent and the Red Cross, so they're all doing it and they will be hosting and teaching. Yeah, but anyone can sign up. It is online. Um you can sign up for the eight to twelve or the twelve to four sessions. Any other questions?
Do you do you certify the lifeguards at Ballroom High School?
Yes, we are. We're using the Ballroom.
You're not having a pool or plunge?
We are not. I don't think anybody would wanna go in the water that's in there right now. No, they'll be at the the, and then we actually, how we do it is we also host um pop-up interviews on the fourth. So that it's kind of one, now we do host interviews pre- uh pre- like after that. But we do do some that day, so it's easier for, we already have the children there, so it's just easier for those to be done. Questions?
Well, thanks again, Hannah. You're Recreation Board. Great job. Anything else to add, Mrs.? All right, uh Public Works, Ms. Siker?
Yes, um I th- thank you very much. I have um met with with Eric who is um the manager of Public Works and to um eh in inspect salt pile and and trucks as we have um very much so needed them this um new calendar year. So it is um well with much pleasure, I I do um know that we we did push through the the first two-hour delay that this um uh Whitehall has been able to support for the school district on on the eighth of um eh this month. And it it was um definitely well appreciated by any of the parents as uh the winter conditions did not allow the the same result for the um the sixteenth. But um here we have it. We we finally have snow again in Whitehall and we're very well appreciative of um our our sock- stockpiles and um e- everyone who's uh out there on on the streets. Um in indeed, um eh as for the the manager's report, we will definitely be posting for Public Works on internet and with the South Hills record on the 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 week of the the twenty uh fourth, is it?
January twenty-fifth.
January twenty-fifth, thank you. And um uh I I do want to report that I did um talk to Eric in Public Works concerning the um eh the renovations are indeed o- uh underway here for the the movement of council chambers. That that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Siker? Move on to public safety, Mr. Bean.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh uh Chief has uh two here, two uh motions here. The first one is uh Pleasant Hills is uh renewing their municipal building, their police station is under regi- so they're in need of a jail. Okay, so.
Holding facility.
It's not a jail.
Temporary holding facility.
It's not a jail, but it's All right, temporary holding. All right, so anyway, I'm gonna authorize the uh to authorize the intergovernmental agreement between Whitehall and Pleasant Hills for the temporary holding of prisoners in the
Whitehall's temporary holding facility.
That's my motion. Motion, motion to read, to read the ordinance, it's your motion.
Correct. Read the ordinance with its authority.
We'll make a motion that we have to read the ordinance in its authority. Courtney, you can do that.
I will read it.
Ordinance number?
Motion being second in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please read.
I, coordinates of the borough of Whitehall, Allegheny County, Commonwealth, Pennsylvania, approving the terms and conditions of the intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the borough of Whitehall and the borough of Pleasant Hills to allow the borough of Pleasant Hills to use the borough of Whitehall's prisoner holding facility. Whereas the borough of Pleasant Hills is currently in need of a prisoner holding facility. Whereas the borough of Whitehall has space available for the borough of Pleasant Hills to use its prisoner holding facility. Whereas it is desired by the borough of Whitehall and the borough of Pleasant Hills to have an agreement setting forth the terms and conditions for the use of Whitehall's prisoner holding facility. And whereas cooperation between the borough of Pleasant Hills and the borough of Whitehall in the exercise and performance of their governmental powers, duties, and functions is authorized by var- various acts of the General Assembly, including the Inter- Intergovernmental Cooperation Act of December nineteenth, nineteen sixty, nineteen ninety-six. Now therefore, the council of the borough of Whitehall hereby ordains as follows. Section one, pursuant to the Inter- Intergovernmental Cooperation Act uh fifty-three P A, the terms and conditions of the intergovernmental cooperation agreement for the use of the borough of Whitehall's prisoner ho- holding facility by the borough of Pleasant Hills, a copy of which is attached here too as it's as exhibit A, are hereby approved and adopted. Section two, the execution of said intergovernmental cooperation agreement by the president of council of the borough of Whitehall is hereby authorized and approved. Section three, this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon its adoptive- adoption. Were gained and enacted into law this seventeenth day of January twenty twenty-four.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion. We adopt the ordinance number?
Eleven seventy.
Eleven seventy.
That's a whole call though.
Yes. On second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Book?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFue?
Yes.
Mrs. Eicher?
Yes.
Mr. Lichetti?
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Soborowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And my second, see how I put you this with you. Okay, the chief reports all police officers received new handheld flashlights and body worn cameras in January. Grant funding will be used to offset the cost of the camera and upgrade. That's all I got.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bean?
No, but I I would like, I'd like to uh mention the fire company has a report and I think Skip Brown is giving a report. Are you gonna give the report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Sure. Um councils should have a copy of the report just for your reference. Um you mentioned the fire call total of sixty-six calls. It should be sixty-eight calls from December first um until present day. From December first, two thousand twenty-two to November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, we had a total of five hundred thirty-six calls. Of those five hundred thirty-six calls, one hundred and eighty-seven of them were between the hours of eight AM and four PM. Calls of significance. Three calls on Christmas Day. This is a record as far as I know, but I've been in the fire company. We had a crash in the Dairy Queen on Route fifty-one and also a crash on Hamilton Road Baptist. There have been several reports of natural gas odors throughout the borough. There's no um rhyme or reason for it, but we are thankful residents are calling in because they can have serious consequences. We held our annual elections with December's being, Ken Seaworth took the place of uh Will Huglen as president. Will has stepped in to the role of vice president by valuable assistance to Ken. Steve Calverio was elected treasurer after Mike Sepotti, a CPA, who served us for several years faithfully decided to take a break. Our fire officers have remained the same with Nick Price um serving as chief. Kalen Austin achieved NFBA firefighter one accreditation. We are proud of Kalen as he initially started as one of our junior firefighters at the age of sixteen. Two applicants applied in December and have accepted as probationary members. This makes a total roster of thirty-one active firefighters. We currently have one application pending approval for our February meeting. Congratulations, Councilman Beef, uh for heading Public Safety Committee. Whitehall Fire Company would like to invite you, another member of council, or even a mayor, to attend our monthly business meetings going forward. Our meetings are held on the third, calendar Monday, every month at seven PM except for December when they are on the second Monday. Our goal is to have a consistent and cohesive communication between the mayor, council, and borough administration. Going forward, a designated officer of Whitehall Fire Company or myself will attend at least one council meeting a month. Right now, the HVAC, hate to bring up the issue because you're having it here, is being repaired our number one fire hole, one fifty-one. This is a thirty thousand dollar expenditure because we need repair repair heat exchangers that went prematurely bad, we believe, after only ten years. Presently, there's no heat on the second floor of our new uh fire hole. The roof at our number two fire hole is leaking. We notified Alicia while Courtney was on vacation at this event. We tried mitigating the damage ourselves by climbing up on the roof, opening drains, and removing debris from the roof. However, the heavy freezing rain and ice that falls after our self-repairs did not work and the roof uh continued to leak. We had burns and scowl. Mitigate the damage for us at a cost of seven hundred dollars. We need to plan and work together for a long-term We need to plan and work together for a long-term solution. During December sixth council meeting, former councilman McGowan directing me uh personally provide information regarding our duty shift program. We provided documentation, workman's compensation in shorts, a job description and answered all Mister McGowan's questions in the form of email to Courtney dated on December seventh two thousand twenty-three. We understand the program's structure will be legally reviewed uh for approval again as was last year, ensure compliance with the Federal Labor Standards Act. We hope with the help of uh help of borough council, the mayor, the borough administration, this legal review can be expedited and approved in a timely manner. We need to continue the duty shift program to ensure fire protection during weekday daylight hours from eight A M to four P M when many of our volunteer firefighters are working. And finally, Whitehall Fire Company would like to clarify statements that were made in the letter that was sent out recently to all residents of Whitehall Borough. There was a mention of the aerial that needs to be replaced at a cost of one point seven million. After we were approved by council to order aerial in May of two thousand twenty-three, the cost was one point seven million at that time. During budget planning, we were told by council, mainly Mister McGowan, that there would be no funding available to take the two thousand twenty-six delivery of the aerial and we had to cancel the order. The one point seven million cost is no longer valid as costs continue to go up as each month passes. There was mention of that eight hundred fifty thousand dollars was given to the library and fire company. This was not clear or broken down, you know, for the residents. There was also a statement that the borough was helping Whitehall Fire Company with replacing our S C B A self-contained breathing apparatus. Replacing the fifteen-year-old S C Bs has a total cost of about two hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. Replacing the cylinders at a cost of fifty thousand dollars is a temporary workaround. However, the backpacks, the regulators and face pieces, components of the S C B A are increasingly subject to failure as they further age. We need to come up with a plan to replace remaining S C B A components as they are too increasing in cost as each month passes. The S C Bs are needed for firefighters to do their job safely. Inadequate or failing S C Bs put firefighters' lives at risk. That is all, sir, thank you.
Is there any?
Yeah, well, just uh Bill and I were talking, so we're gonna we're gonna try to work something out. Uh I think your next meeting, what's the nineteenth, I just figured it out, right, the nineteenth of February. We'll 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 talk and see what, you know, we'll figure it out, it would be nice, you know. I always enjoy coming to the park.
Can I say something there also, under public safety?
Uh yes.
May I have you do that?
Press it again.
Yes, you can. Stand up and say your name.
I wanna back up what uh Skip said, uh I've been a member of the fire company for almost forty years. I was the chief of the fire company for most twenty years, daylight chief for nine, actual chief for eleven years. And what Skip said is all true for the fire company. Fire company always had a good working relationship with council, council always had a great, great uh working relationship with us, always, since I've been around and I was chief for the forty years that I've been coming up here. With that said, the shift crew is a valid point to have due to what we do as a shift crew. Not only do we protect that, we were not educated over a thousand children in our school district. All the Ballin House schools, the private schools, churches and our health facilities. Without the daylight shift crew, we will not be able to do that. The daylight shift crew provides a get-go fire protection for this municipality to get things started. Without the shift crew, as Skip said, everybody's at work. The shift crew provides that, you're paying the shift crew fifteen dollars an hour, them guys can say, you know what? We don't want to do that, we don't want to put our life on the line, we go to McDonald's for fifteen dollars an hour. It's a uh valuable point that this council makes that happen. Whether you donate the money like we wanted you do to do before, as you do to the library, or you make a donation to the library every year. Well, the fire company is just as important as the library. So we would like council to make consideration, so we don't have to jump through hoops, which Mister McGowan stated to Skip, we or and Ken, that we have to jump through hoops. There is no possible way that this council should make our fire company jump through hoops. They don't make the police department or any other entity of this borough jump through hoops. The fire company is there three hundred sixty-five days a year, twenty-four hours a day. The other night we had a call ten after two in the morning, snow covered roads, guys got out of bed, proceeded to the fire hall, proceeded to the call. There is no reason why this fire company should have to come up here, week after week after week, to fight for what we need from you guys to protect this borough that you guys all sit up here to protect this borough. So we would like council to make a donation, like we asked, to continue the shift crew through twenty twenty-four and continue it on. We got guys that are filling shifts, we hardly ever have an empty shift. We're on the road within a very minimal time, the guys are taking care of trucks, our buildings, our grounds. So I believe the council needs to really consider the donation to the fire company and let us continue to do our job for you and all these residents of this borough. Thank you.
Um Leah, a question for you. You you mentioned we donate money to the library and to the police department.
Contribution.
Contribute, and we do, but in both of those cases, we appoint their boards. Is the fire company willing, I mean, do you want to go in the same direction?
What boards are you gonna pro- point for the fire company?
That's what I'm asking, you you want us to appoint officers? I I mean, the library board is appointed by council. I'm I'm just asking.
I don't know what your point is about that, we point our own members because council, council does not know what the we do as far as being members.
Otherwise, you're a voluntary organization, much as the Boy Scouts.
We're a separate entity from the borough, we we appoint our own boards.
Correct.
Correct.
And that's what I'm seeing is the difference. You can't quite compare yourself to the library because.
Oh, no, we don't.
Well, you just did.
Well, we, no, compared to what you're donating to them, we don't compare ourselves to the library. Libraries will put their life on the line twenty-four seven, this is what I'm saying, we're here for you and the rest of this community.
But I'm saying, you're asking us just to give you money with no control.
That's what was said, but.
Over that money, where are the other organizations, or let's eliminate the other organizations from the conversation.
Fine.
From your conversation.
Correct, okay, what, okay, eliminate the library, sorry about the library. But what council said that we are to be responsible stewards, and that's Mister McGowan's statement at at the meeting, and we have been responsible stewards. Council has never came to us in the past eight months and said, hey, what's going on? Not once, nobody.
Anybody could, anybody from council is welcome to come to our meeting, we have open books.
Absolutely.
Okay, we've invited you for years, I've never seen you in the fire hall, I've never, have you ever been?
I have been invited once.
There's always been an open invitation for all.
At that point, at that time, we were building the new fire hall, and I know you and I don't get along well, Skip. At that time, we were building that fire hall and I said, wait a minute, you guys came up and gave us an estimate of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. And oh, everyone was denying it except one fireman, who probably isn't part of a membership.
Hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars for what?
To ref- refurbish the fire hall one fifty-one, that was the very original plan.
Refurbish the little building?
Uh we didn't go along with it, we said, no, there's other ways to do it, we can build a better building. But that was the only meeting I was ever invited to.
And we came to many m- meetings here and asked council if they were, John Lotus came to many meetings when he was on council. Our o- our doors are always open, frequently has nothing to hide for anybody, anywhere.
Bill and I, Bill and I, one of us will who will be there.
The next meeting.
Before we uh move on, I, e- everybody doesn't know uh Lee. Lee Price has over seven thousand, I'm gonna guess now, three hundred, four hundred, nevermind.
Almost eight thousand calls.
Eight thousand calls in Whitehall Borough as a volunteer fire.
All I'm saying, Kathy, is we need to help to help you, in the community.
And I understand that and I appreciate what you're doing, but I'm saying there is a difference between a truly volunteer group and the other two groups that keep getting mentioned. So if we could just keep them out of the conversation.
Alright, we'll keep them out of the picture, but also with that said, the borough cannot afford to pay for a so-called pay fire company.
You're right.
Right now.
So we're, there's all kinds of angles that have to be.
Absolutely, to go there. Right now, uh the borough budget, forty-six to forty-eight percent of the budget goes towards the one of the best police departments in Allegheny County. Four percent of the budget goes towards the library, two percent of the budget goes to the fire company.
Now, wait a minute, you just said to me we're not gonna bring the library.
Well, I'm just saying what's, you guys put this on, your lamas put this on.
The library and the fire department got the money.
Yeah, you guys put this out there, I didn't make that up.
Yeah, but you put the library back into it. My point is, the library is different than the volunteer fire company. Because we appoint their board of directors.
Okay.
So they're different than you guys, so you, you're not comparing apples and oranges, but anyway, let's move on with it.
I got you.
I I don't see the difference between giving you trucks and giving you money for for personnel. In other words, we do give them trucks.
Correct.
We do give them a building.
Correct.
Give them a lot of things, and so uh giving them money for for a a program that's absolutely necessary today is just an extension of the help that we have been giving them. Uh would, you know, what it it probably, in in retrospect, Courtney would rewrite the letter, you know, given that your concerns that it was dropped in together, uh but um, you know, you pointed it out to uh Skip that it probably should have been separated as to what we give the fire company and what we give the law.
Yeah.
Okay, you you thought to be, one of you gentlemen will be at the next meeting in February and you're gonna report then, okay?
Yes.
We're gonna move on.
Thank you.
The administrative services, Mrs. DePue. Okay, heading in zoning, Mister Lichetti.
Um commission met last week, uh elected Carol Tethillo as chair, Jim Calissimo as vice chair, Mary Agnes Galvin as secretary and Jim Watts as assistant secretary. Uh they also discussed the request by Fairhaven Beneficial Society and L and M Laundromat in Cassidy Village to amend the zoning ordinances to allow the limited amusement arcades containing three or less amusement devices. Um commission members appeared receptive to the request and the discussion, the discussion will continue at the February fourteenth meeting. Planning Commission also completed its discussion on a revised on revised fence regulations and is expected to move forward. A recommendation to borough council at the February fourteenth meeting. Yesterday, the developer of Grove Point Phase Two submitted the Ninth Amendment subdivision application plan, which will be reviewed by the Planning Commission at the February fourteenth meeting. And the zoning hearing board elected Leo Delia as chair and Mark Christman as vice chair, and the board held a hearing on variance request at five-five-three Dunn Drive to permit a building addition to approach into a rear yard setback on a corner lot. The board is expected to render a decision at its February twentieth twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thank you, Kristen, anyone have any questions?
Uh I I do, I do, um so Public Works is um not yet in a responsibility for the the roads of of any phase of Grove Point and I would wanted to know if there must be some mind minds here um between our staff and our our board here that might um enlighten me as to what um would be the holdup of these residents uh from um the the streets that have been um living and uh for um the the past al- almost three years now.
Um I can answer your question.
Thank you.
Um there's a process to accept uh those said streets.
Mm-hmm.
Uh one of which is a legal description that has been done. Um an inspection of those roads that has been done. The only item that is still outstanding, I have no idea why it's taken so long, is an as-built plan
As-built plan.
of the storm and sanitary sewer, Mister Delet, the planning director, has shared that with the homeowners association as well as the developer um of of the plan. And last, the update that we had, it was with their engineer and their surveyors to prepare the as-built plan.
Okay, um because I understand that the gateway engineering is also in control of um our our official municipal map. Uh whereas these streets are not yet on the official municipal map.
Well, it's typically we add that add the streets when they're accepted.
Yes, yes, I I I I do understand and um I I'm very much looking forward to to that addition. So I I will make sure that I I reach out to to Mister Delet regarding those things because the the um street signs have been ordered and uh they they have them in storage. It it's just a matter of being able to have the official go-ahead and they they weren't cleared, so thank you for for clearing that up, thank you. Okay, well, thank you.
Madam President, uh one thing to add, there is a uh planning and zoning committee meeting on February eighth at five P M to review applications for the vacant position.
Oh, okay.
Uh committee meeting, planning and zoning committee meeting on February eighth at five P M to review the applications for vacancy for the planning board.
Okay, alright, thank you. And last is the parks committee, Mrs. DePue.
Wait, wait, before we move on.
I have a bill, it's me. Now, can I interrupt? I think I'm a planning and zoning person, yeah, nudge, I want to have a sidewalk built on Grove. How do I, what do we need to do for that? Do you want my plan? So um, you should have spoke up at citizens' requests, so is it okay?
Yes, absolutely, go ahead.
Thank you.
This is the baby.
You know, it's good for you.
For sure. Okay, okay, my name's Chelsea Anderson, I live on fifty-two ninety-five Hydrow Road and regularly go down to Cassidy Village by walking along Grove, and lots of people do because the tea stations of on the other side of the street, you walk over to Cassidy. Um I'm hoping that the council can find a way to put a sidewalk on Grove that like could possibly be a bike or strollerable area. And people are generally very respectful of people walking along Grove, but it's still a lot of interest, so.
There's a sidewalk there, so let me just put it over to the uh committee. Tristan and then.
I have a little paper, if you want my my diagram.
Okay, so they can bring it up at the next meeting.
I got here late enough, but it's.
Okay, they'll bring it up at the next meeting and discuss it and then someone, procedures back.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tristan, uh Tristan, I I just wanted to make a comment, because you and I have been talking about this. With regard to the expansion of the amusement devices, there may be a distinction between the Fairhaven and the laundromat at, you know, Cassidy Village that there aren't any, you know, Fairhaven, there are employees there, there are people that, you know, uh run the Fairhaven, at Cassidy Village, at the laundromat, there's no one down there, you know, I would I I would just ask that we think about whether, you know, not lump the two together and say, hey, we need to expand it, but think, you know, is there, you know, one of the reasons for expanding it for each type of facility? That I would just ask that that some thought to give you.
And that was brought up a little bit, uh Scott said that you were, that you have a discussion with the chief about those ideas. Okay, thank you.
Oh, the association, okay.
Yeah, we're a private club, our door, you have to be a member.
Okay, Parks Committee, Mrs. DePue, no, no report, okay. Alright then, so now is the time for our new business, and a new business we brought before council.
Alright, um I have a bunch of motions I'd like to want to make. Um Mrs. Iker expressed um interest and assistance in ten motions that we presenting like. So in an effort to show that this is a non-party uh idea, I would like her to read half of them and I'd second them, um yeah, these are for.
We have to do one at a time.
Yeah, yeah, so I will do, I would be six.
Well, there are not going to be.
They will be motions that can put on the agenda for next.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed that, yeah.
Remember, we had the discussion before, so um. The first is, I vote, I make a motion to put on the agenda for next meeting, make it mandatory that before every pay application for a capital project, a job site walkthrough and inspection be conducted by a committee of council before a vote is cast on payment.
Second.
So I have a question.
Yes.
I have a lot of questions.
Why are we putting a motion on without having any discussion about it? Shouldn't it go to a committee to be talked about or since the committees are open? I I just don't quite understand why you don't want it talked about, you just all of a sudden want to vote.
Well, we could, because anytime we talk about it in a committee discussion, it always disappears or it gets kicked down the road. So I would just prefer to just maybe. So I would just prefer to just make them front of the floor to be put on the agenda. If you wanna talk about them now, we could talk about them now. Um, I gave them to you actually two weeks ago to review, so nobody reached out to me.
I don't think it's practical to walk around all these projects.
Huh?
Every time there's a project to go be walking around the borough, you-
That's your thought.
As the capital threshold.
Stone, maybe we could ask this. What, what's the problem that is intended to be addressed? What, what do you see as the problem with the way, uh, you know, we have the borough engineer who's trained in these areas, uh, you know, um, you know, except for, you, you have some knowledge of cement, but, you know, I look around the room, not, not everybody else does. What are they gonna see that, that, you know, they're relying on the, the, and, you know, the experts to tell them whether the project is done? And I'm sure on a voluntary basis, if you, because you know concrete, wanted to go up and say to the engineer, hey, I'd like to take a look at the work, you could do that. Any one of us could do that. But to actually put into play a, a program where members of council had to approve, which he, I think, awfully burdensome and would, you know, like, why don't we have a borough engineer?
I mean, we have one, one big capital project this year at Be Overlook Park, which everybody should be looking. Okay, I'll give a perfect example. The, um, final pay application for the swimming pool, right? I came, I wa- I locked, I, I, I looked through it. I saw, um, there was cracks everywhere. I brought it to council. I showed it. Everybody said, you know, that, you don't know what you're talking about. So we issued the final application. Had somebody done a job site walkthrough with me, maybe we could have, you know, I don't know.
Well, you brought it back and it was repaired. Do we, do we have to pay for that?
No.
No, we still have to pay for it. So, so here's my point. You are, you-
And what are we elected to do?
You who are knowledgeable.
If we're not supposed to look at it, that you're, you're, that's, you're elected to do that, to oversee everything that's going on in the world.
No, we're elected to, to use people that are knowledgeable in the area, like the, the borough engineer, that we had a construction manager, um, you know, we had Public Works. But one, the point that I'm making is you have knowledge in this area. You went up and you saw it. You brought it to the attention. It got corrected. In other words, it doesn't require Kathy and Lacey and Linda and, you know, everybody to, to come up with you to, to look at that. If somebody has an interest in the project and wants to go up and inspect it, like you, 'cause you're knowledgeable about concrete, then you made it happen. It didn't require multiple council people doing that. Um, many who don't have the skills would rather rely on the, you know, the borough engineer. But you brought it to the attention. It was addressed. We didn't have to pay for it. So to put into place a policy where, you know, hopefully they're just spending their time on, you know, other improvements in the borough and on their own committees, it's just, it's just a thought. I, I don't, I don't wanna delay.
Could you not argue that, like, I'm, I was on library committee, right?
Right.
Could you not argue and say, what does Stones Obrowski know about library committee, right? What does Bill Veek know about, you know, from, you know, anything, you know?
Well, you, that's where you learn. That's where you learn. You're gonna be making decisions about it.
Could you not argue that's where they would learn about that whole, so, like, uh-
Part of the government is part of, you know, a bit about everything.
Well, you could just vote no. That's fine. I mean, it's, I'm not forcing anybody to vote yes or no. It'll just-
I, I, I was interested in seconding this, uh, simply because I, I learned government compliance as a contractor at the Venice Laboratory, and we did have a governmental agency, uh, on-site to review our work and have questions, and they were not going to, to renew our, our contract collectively if, uh, work was not, uh, up to par. So therefore, I, I view, uh, everyone on, on staff and every single contractor of this borough, whether they be on retainer or be on, uh, as a contractor for a specific project, to be a, um, customer of the government. I am, uh, an agency, uh, of said government that I was elected to represent. I was elected to represent the taxpayers. And we want to know that the, the money that, uh, this body has agreed to spend actually goes towards the projects, and, uh, we're not talking about all projects. We're talking about capital projects, and we're not talking about everyone on council. We're talking about a quorum of the people on council to know what the pay applications that they're actually voting upon will, will be about. Because I take it very seriously that every single pay application that I'm going to, to review to make sure that it is in, in the budget and is, uh, allocating this matter, because this is a contract, right?
Okay.
If you see that information.
Just like, if there was not?
We have the information.
Capital projects. Okay, capital projects. Name and company. Very true. Council table, three, one, street installation. I could go on and on and on. We're gonna walk through all these things? This is crazy.
Well, you don't wanna walk, they're the, why are you even on council?
No, not for that position.
Okay, this gentleman up wants to say, and you can-
I just have a question. One, you know what this is not? I live at one oh seven Dipchase Quarter. I don't know who put this on, um, the Facebook. Was that someone from council that put this on Facebook? I'm just going to share this with you. I, I wonder if people always were very concerned about taxes and things. So somebody put a very extensive report about some of the concrete with the swimming pool, and that's been a very hot issue because people are very concerned about, you know, raising taxes. And then some people who didn't want the swimming pool because it raised taxes and things of that nature. So several people called me because I'm a member of just the, um, I'm just a member of, on the board with, uh, Mr. Stone. Actually, we're just on the, uh, so. Hey, I was gonna ask you about this on Monday. And so it turns out, yeah, several called me concerned about it when it was covered by insurance. So all this information was put on Facebook, but they didn't put all the information on that it, it was covered by the contractors or the people who, who-
Slight information.
That, that, that was, you put the information like that out there. You didn't put all the information out there.
That's like the same, same line as pretend you just bought a car with a hundred thousand mile warranty, right? And you take it home, engine shop. Don't you think that the taxpayers would wanna know what we got? I mean, that's just common sense to me, but I could be, I mean, they are different.
You can put all the information on there either. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna, we have a motion and a second. We're done with that. A motion and a second. To move on with this for the agenda for next meeting. If anyone favors, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Okay.
Moving on to, you have another?
So, um, the next, and this is just to be put on the agenda for next meeting, you know, this is not a vote. Um, every public meeting must include all sanitary and storm projects, sewer projects that are paid for the week, including the exact location of the project, all work done, and all costs associated with each project. These additions to the agenda will be made under storm and sanitary sewer areas of the agenda and will be made public through the public agenda while voting, as well as included in the minutes. So, um, example, um-
I'm sorry, Mr. Silverell, so you're making a motion to add that to the agenda?
This is just a-
It's another, is there a second to the-
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Second. All right. Any discussion? I don't understand. I don't-
Yeah, what's, what's the problem that you're trying to address? Like, what have we not been doing, that we should have been doing, that your motion is going to address that one? What's the problem?
Pretend we did Cameron on Felix Drive, okay, for fifty thousand, this is just fifty thousand dollars. I'd like that in the agenda, so then people could go through the minutes.
Right, you're saying you wanted that on the agenda before we did?
I want it in the minutes so people could look and see where, when they paid, when we paid for this project, exactly where it was done, exactly what was done. And that's just to check if there's ever any sort of duplication or any sort of thing like that. Not that there ever is. I mean, we do a great job, but, um, it's just-
Well, that is in the minutes, isn't it?
So in the minutes, if we do-
It's in one of the engineer reports.
It's right here.
Okay, you're not getting what I'm saying, though. No, that's, that's, that's not, no, that's the street, that's what we're doing. That's our pavement project, Lacey.
This is the sanitary sewer repair tracking. Am I looking at something different than you? I wanna make sure I'm understanding what you're, I wanna make sure I understand what you're talking about.
So.
So there's, this is spot lining repairs?
We go-